Thank you for everyone for coming tonight. We'll start off with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, up next Administrator's report.
The agenda was posted at the Three Lakes School, the Sugar Camp School and Town of Sugar Camp via email, the Town of Three Lakes, Town of Monaco, and the Demer Library. And the media notified included the Vilas County News, the Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and WACD, WATK Radio.
Next amendments and approval of agenda?
There are no amendments for the agenda.
Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion by Michelle, second by Stacy. Or was that both of you? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, five zero. Next, we move to approve minutes of the April 17th regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 17th, 2024 regular meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion by Michelle, second Josh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard, five zero. Okay, next we move on to vouchers check register for the period of April 10th, 2024 through May 10th, 2024.
Make the motion to approve checks dated April 10th, 2024 through May 9th. Twenty two, that's, I missed that before. That says 10th, that says 9th.
I actually verified it with Caleb. It's appropriate.
It is the 9th?
Yep.
Okay, that's, I thought it was through reading. Okay, start over. Motion to approve the checks dated April 10th, 2024 through May 9th, 2024 for accounts payable checks, number 232-400-252 through 232-400-285. Regular checks, number 129-601 through 129-741. Manual checks, number 5661 through 5678. And wire transfers, number 2023-00058 through 2023-00071 in the amount of $672,244.86. And ACH payroll checks, number 9000-42722 through 9000-42958. And regular payroll checks, number 59353 through 59353 in the amount of $336,619.74 for a total of $1,008,864.60.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Stacy. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard, motion passes. Five zero. Next, we move on to public comments. Are there any public comments regarding agenda items? Thank you. We move into Administrator's report.
Okay, tonight I'm just going to give you a brief update on the Title IX regulations. They are going to be changing and it does have a rather significant impact on school districts, although it says that it probably won't. When you get deeper into the law, it actually really is going to. I provided with you, for you, you know, the policy perspective for your reading. That's a pretty nice summary of it. I thought instead of going real in-depth with it, there will be more information coming out in the next few weeks with many things that are going on at the legislative level or the federal and the state level. It's being figured out and the trainings are being planned now as it's being developed. What this really means for us that we should keep in mind is that the expansion of sexual harassment, the definition, is making a much broader sweep than it used to be. And it is going to affect the school districts because in the past, it really was, it had to be more than circumstantial. It had to be very much objective. Now there's going to be the provision that if there are circumstances that lead to a preponderance of evidence, that has to be considered and investigated. So, much more will be considered and investigated. The threat no longer is limited to being physical. It can be if somebody perceives it as a health or safety issue. So I just wanted to give you a couple of highlights on that. All staff will have to be trained. This goes into first effect August 1st. So, that's something that will be on our docket when we come back. The new law and provisions read that all employees must be trained before they can start the first day of work. So even with our substitute teachers and new hires, bus drivers, everybody, that training has to take place and be in effect before you are working in your position. So that's a rather big shift. Also, something that works for the benefit of smaller schools is that now we are allowed to have one investigator. It is Justin Zeus as the principal. Before you had to have one as the investigator and you had to have a separate person as the person that, you know, went ahead, now I'm drawing a blank, but there was two levels to it. Now you can have the person who invests the complaint and makes the findings as the same person. If ever we do have a situation like this, I, Justin would be speaking with me and the people who are involved. So I assure you that it won't be in any way less work. Bigger districts are very concerned. They are feeling that the implications might lead to having one Title IX compliance officer or several within their districts depending on the size and the far-reaching nature of this because it is a much broader definition. And finally, if there's a student with an IEP, it has to be more thoroughly investigated and the IEP is going to have to be, the case manager, the director of Special Ed and Pupil Services will be contacted and it will result in the reconvening of an IEP. So that's another big shift. That was a whole lot of information that you're probably going, oh, what does it really mean? What it really means is we have to get trained. We will get trained. We are told we do not have to invest money in the training, but DPI is going to release that. We're already getting kind of bombarded with trainings out there. Hopefully, the DPI release of trainings will be much better than we experienced earlier this year with some of the mandatory reporting as well as we work with Vector Solutions and they are currently, they've been in contact with Justin already, that they are making a training that matches what is required, which is very important for when we do have new hires, that we can get them set up and trained, at least the first blush at it before we go into a deeper professional development with it. So, any questions at the moment on the Title IX regulations?
Does Vector provide the trainer or just the training material?
Material, in its online training.
Okay. And will that extend, we talked about it last month because of the additional requirement, will that extend the need for additional training at the beginning of the school year?
It will, but we will have time to fit it within our back-to-school in-service days. And so that's what I have on that. And I'll give you guys an update as we learn more.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Terry. Okay, next we move into new business. Annually, we have the requirement for the election of officers. Order will go president, vice president, clerk, and lastly treasurer for positions, followed by CISA delegate and alternate. At this time, fulfilling the presidency, I will open the floor to nominations for president.
I'll nominate Alicia Williams as president.
Second.
I will accept. Is there any other nominations for president? Hearing none. I'll ask to take it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None heard. Next, we will move to vice president. I'll open the floor to nominations for vice president.
I will make a nomination for Stacy Klein for vice president.
Second.
Do you accept?
I will accept.
Any other nominations for vice president? Hearing none, nominations are closed. All those in favor of Stacy Klein for vice president signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, passes, five zero. The next position is secretary. I'll open the floor to nominations for the position of secretary.
Clerk.
I'll make a nomination for Josh Crowell for secretary slash clerk.
Second.
I'll accept.
Any other nominations for clerk? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations for clerk. All those in favor of Josh Crowell for board clerk signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard, five zero. Next position is treasurer. I'll open the floor to nominations for the position of treasurer.
I'll make a motion to nominate Mitch Ellis for treasurer.
Second.
Do you accept?
I accept.
Is there any other nominations for the position of treasurer? Hearing none. All those in favor of Mitch Ellis for the position of treasurer signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard, five zero. Now we move into CISA delegate as well as alternate. This is a volunteer basis?
Yes, this is actually what we need the delegate to be, to actually responsibilities. Attending the August meeting, Board of Control meeting in Tomahawk, and then as the delegate when we go to the convention.
Unless someone else is interested, I have no problem being the delegate at the convention again.
Can you make the meeting too?
I'd say if you want to. When's the August meeting?
Uh, August, August 5th, I think, yeah.
At 7:00.
In Tomahawk.
I mean, I'd be willing to be the alternate if you want to be the delegate unless somebody else wants to be alternate. Mitch? Okay? Got quiet over there.
He's taking it all.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to, for Alicia Williams as CISA delegate.
Second.
All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? None heard, five zero. If we can do a motion for alternate, please?
I'll make a motion for the CISA nine alternate to be Josh Crowell.
Second.
All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard, five zero.
I did not ask about the secret ballot. We did not need it.
We did not need it.
All right, next we're going to move into June meeting dates.
The regular board meeting will be scheduled for June 19th, 2024 at 6:00 PM at Sugar Camp.
Generally, we do a motion that's not identified.
Alicia?
Yes, sir.
Could I get a quick picture of you and Talos? I keep forgetting your name, Mitch. For the paper, and then I got to run.
Sure.
Can I get you up at the black screen?
Is my hair okay?
Perfect. Maybe you both just to your left a little bit.
Should I move closer?
Thank you, guys. Thanks, Terry.
Okay, back. So to repeat, meeting date, June 19th, 2024 at 6:00 PM in Sugar Camp. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion for the June regular meeting date of June 19th, 2024 at 6:00 PM in Sugar Camp.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Stacy. All those in favor of the meeting date signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard, five zero.
I thought if it was a normal, we didn't need a...
I don't think we have to technically do it if it's a regular meeting that we're not changing.
Okay.
It's okay, especially with the Sugar Camp location.
Totally fine, yeah.
All right, next. I know, I didn't even see it. It was Terry at the beginning. Next, we move to consider approval of the personnel report of new hires and resignations.
All right, for new hires this month, we have the report of Wendy Plin for the Family and Consumer Education and Health Position, Marcus Crowell for fourth grade teacher at Sugar Camp, Rebecca Anderson for Chemistry, Physics, and Science, Anne Ellis as a 712 Administrative Assistant, resignations Nicole Loesch effective for the 24, 25 school year, and termination non-renewal Carrie Eisen.
Any questions? Okay, take a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Stacy. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard, motion passes, five zero. Next up, consider approval of the Three Lakes School District's ACP E4E plan.
Excellent, I do have a presentation I would like to share with the board. So, in your board packet, you should have received two documents. One was the ACP, the Academic and Career Plan, and the other one was the future readiness document that is embedded in the Academic and Career Plan. With the, understanding the time and the big, another big event this evening, I took out a good portion of the information that I felt the board needed to be aware of. There is, there's 10 pages in the entire Academic and Career Plan document. If at any time, as I go through the information that's in the presentation, if you'd like to ask any questions or you'd like me to elaborate on any of the information, I'd be glad to do so. So we currently have our Academic and Career Plan up on our website.
Just touched it.
Touched it.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you. We currently have the existing Academic and Career Plan up on the website. And over the course of the year, there were a number of new items that needed to be added. And of course, with our programming completely, well, continually changing, there were a number of items that we added into this, this plan that we're going to talk about today. All right, so what is academic and career planning? So, number one, it is student-focused. It is, our goal here is to, every single day, focus on our students, have a purpose-driven school day for every student, every single day. Understanding that every student has a different set of skills, hobbies, interests, and aspirations and goals. It's driven by the students. We meet them where they're at. It starts down at the lower elementary, driven by Mrs. Opel and the elementary staff. And it's continued all the way through the upper elementary into junior high and high school. Again, it's individualized, based on student interests, goals, where they're at currently in their educational plan and what their goals are, and then how do we bridge that gap? So this Academic and Career Plan is focusing on what we're doing in school, in the classrooms, and then all the programs that we infuse throughout elementary, junior high, and high school. Of course, it's adult-supported, starting with the teachers and all the staff here at school. We have, at junior high and high school level, we have college representatives coming in, we have military representatives coming in, we have community members coming in to do, to have discussions and to do presentations. So it is, it is completely adult-supported, along with parents too, guiding their students along the process. Understanding it's a process for sure, starting at that lower elementary, infusing all the different components that we have, emphasizing the classroom discussions as well, and then continuing all the way through elementary, junior high, high school, and sometimes beyond. We recently had a grad panel where one of our former graduates came in and talked about how they had to go back and follow this process through college because their major, their plan, their career plan changed throughout the way. So, understanding this is a process and being able to come back to that process at any given time is important to understand. So this is kind of an overview of the process. And again, starting back in the lower elementary in Sugar Camp in Three Lakes, students need to know who they are, their unique interests, their skill sets, their hobbies. There's a saying that we use often that if you enjoy what you do, you never work a day in your life. So again, going back to what are those students' interests, their skill sets, their hobbies, and then identifying those early on. And we know that skills and hobbies and interests can change throughout. So in junior high, we revisit those and we actually come back throughout high school as well. But knowing who students are, who they are, and helping foster that is kind of the beginning stage of the future-ready portion of the Academic and Career Plan. And then throughout the process, we're helping students explore. And we do that in a variety of ways. We look at career clusters. There's 16 different career clusters that encompass all future plans that students may have. And then we look at the pathways. Academically, what classes do students need to take in order to get to where they are, where they are now, to where they want to be? We look at the education and training requirements. Again, what education components do they need to get here at the elementary, junior high, and high school? And then, does their plan require technical school, four-year university, potentially going into an apprenticeship, working with, you know, a skilled person in the trades? So we focus on that next. We also look at service and work-based learning opportunities. So, the work-based learning opportunities include job shadows, getting students out of the building, engaged in community opportunities, school-to-work opportunities, youth apprenticeships when appropriate. So those are all infused in those work-based learning opportunities that can also help students explore, figure out what are their, what post-secondary opportunities may fit their needs best. And then looking at some of the other programs that we have, these technical, career and technical certifications. So when we look at our school and what we offer, we have our welding program. Students are able to graduate with their welding degree before they graduate high school. We have a CNA program, partnership with Pines, where students go up to Northern Pines for a semester and work on their CNA certification. We have our EMT partnership with Nicolay College as well. And we've had students recently obtain their firefighter certification as well. So those all fit under the career and technical certification opportunities that our students engage in. And then plan it. So once we have a better, students have a better understanding of who they are, they explore opportunities, start to plan. So again, meeting the students where they are and then putting that plan together. We have a comprehensive four-year plan that our students in high school follow. Starts with what courses do they need to take here? And then, at the bottom, we really focus on those work-based learning experiences, expecting two, and encouraging two job shadows per year, going out and doing two college or technical school visits. If it works out for the student with their schedule, if it's appropriate to do a school-to-work opportunity or a youth apprenticeship, encouraging that into, sometimes junior year, but definitely senior year. So putting that plan together, again, making sure that it's flexible because we do know that those future aspirations and goals can change over time. And then our goal is to have students leave here confident that they have a plan, that the plan that they executed through elementary, junior high, and high school, prepare them for that next step. And we hope that they have that confidence. Of course, they can always reevaluate if their plan changes. Maybe it's during technical school, four-year university. Maybe they go into apprenticeship and they realize that it's not right for them. But they can always come back to the plan, reevaluate, and continue the process as needed. So I broke down the four components to talk a little bit more about some of the programs that we offer and things that we highlight. So again, the self-awareness activities and the exploration activities, starting down with Mrs. Opel in Laura Elementary. Again, figuring out who am I as a student? Who am I as a person? Exploring options here locally. And also understanding that if you don't want to live the Northwoods lifestyle, you want to travel other places, what are opportunities elsewhere? And then, individual goal setting, working with students. What are your goals? Where are you at now? Where do you want to be? And how do we bridge that gap to make that, make that accomplishment that all students can, can reach? When we get to the explore side of things, so the what do I want to do? We have a whole bunch of opportunities for students, starting here in eighth grade with the Heavy Metal Tour. This is an opportunity for our eighth graders to travel around. Most of the, most of the job sites that they visit are over in Rhinelander. However, I always try to include Kviturski Brothers and some other local opportunities as well when it, when it works out. We were at Del Lake Precision this year as well with our eighth graders. The Wisconsin Education Fair is an awesome opportunity. This has been housed over at the Rhinelander Dome the last couple of years. And all of the local schools are able to attend this morning event. We have representative from every UW school, from every technical school in the state. And then there's a number of schools from the UP, from Minnesota, Illinois as well. So it is a packed house where, and also military representatives. So there's really a representative for every student. And they have an opportunity to go through and scan barcode labels and learn about technical schools, four-year universities. They get connected with those representatives. And those representatives then can follow up with them and provide information as needed. So that's an event that all of our juniors participate in every single year. That's also a great opportunity then to connect with those representatives. Those representatives will come in then during wind time and then they'll be able to have a little bit more of an intimate conversation, talking about the next steps in the admission process. Career awareness activities, a lot of these really start at the, with the lessons and the topics that are discussed in the classroom. And then, based on, based on student interest, we can expand that to having guest speakers come in. we can expand that to having guest speakers come in. And during wind time, we utilize that a lot with, with local community members, folks taking, I know that tomorrow morning, Mr. Stotts is taking his biology group out on a grouse study, they're doing a grouse study. We have a number of students actually that are, after that event, he does that annually, are interested in becoming a wildlife biologist. They've done job shadows with that person who does the grouse studies. So, these career awareness activities really play an impactful part of our students' academic and career planning. The career research, same thing, so we utilize a program called ZELLO for the career research. So, based on their interests and, and skill sets and hobbies, the program will, will couple those with, it's called an interest inventory, and it'll couple those, the data that the program collects with careers that align to those. And so, students can research those careers, they find out, does it require a technical school, four-year university, in order to get into those careers, or the cost, the cost factors into technical school versus the four-year university, and some of the universities that have those programs. So, that, the career research part is done a lot in our ZELLO platform. All students have to do four activities throughout the year in that ZELLO platform, and it changes, starts in sixth grade, goes through 12th grade, and those activities vary from sixth through 12th. Of course, classroom discussions, as I mentioned, those classroom discussions lead to hopefully interests, and those interests then can lead to job shadows and more intimate academic and career conversations. We attended a career day this year in Rhine, or I'm sorry, Cranton, and Cranton is now housing the Regional Career Day, which is outstanding. There were over 100 different representatives from all 16 career clusters. Nicolay was there with a representative of all of their programs as well, so our students had the opportunity to go through from booth to booth to booth, focusing on the career clusters of interest to them, a lot of them connected with some of the representatives from the programs at Nicolay. So, that was a very impactful day, and that's something that we're, we're going to do annually. And then, of course, having guest speakers come in, again, a number of our teachers have guest speakers come into the classroom. We can utilize wind time to have guest speakers, again, whether they're military representatives, technical school representatives, four-year university representatives, or local business reps that want to come in and connect with our students. So, these are some examples of how we engage our students in the exploration of the ACP. Once they have a better understanding of, you know, they've done the exploration, now it's start, now it's time to really start planning and getting to that next level. So, as students transition from middle school to high school, we take that four-year plan and really work extensively with the students and, and parents, of course, to prepare, make sure that they have a purpose-driven school day, every class they're taking is hopefully based on skill acquisition, acquiring those, those skills that are going to be applicable to their post-secondary plan. The work-based learning opportunities, again, really encouraging students to get out and job shadow, connect with a, a community member who is in that field, that can be that mentor. And then, ultimately, junior, senior year, senior year for sure, looking at if it's appropriate for the student to do a youth apprenticeship or a school-to-work opportunity. Also, encouraging students to take advantage of, of the opportunities that we have here with extracurricular. We know that when students are engaged in extracurricular activities, they're learning about time management, they're learning how to work as a team, the coachability, you know, being able to work with their, their coach, it's just like employee working with their employer. And then, finally, in this, this step here, really focusing on the financial plan, understanding what is the cost to attend a four-year university compared to maybe starting out at Nicolay College and doing the transfer program? Understand what does it take to start saving money during summer employment opportunities, focusing on the FAFSA, completing the FAFSA to find out if there's any financial aid that a student may get based on their socioeconomic status. So, all those components are part of the conversations that we have in the planning stage, how do I get to the end goal? And then, finally, engaging, again, in a number of other opportunities here, going and doing it. And, and a lot of these are essentially junior, senior level, upperclassmen are engaging in these, in, in most of these, and again, they're getting to that point where they're, they're transitioning to the next step, and all of these have to do with that, with that post-secondary readiness. And again, our goal is to have students graduate future-ready, knowing what their plan is, taking advantage of all the opportunities that we have, and in the, in the slide coming up here, I have some data to show student engagement in these. I feel like the more students are engaging in these, the more likely they are to have that plan, be ready to go, and have the confidence that their time in high school, prepare them for life after high school. So, here's the data from last year's class, and looking at some of the CTE data, starting off with 109 students took CTE classes, and those CTE classes include our FACE program, our tech ed program, our business program, and our art classes. So, we had 109 students in at least one of those classes. We have concentrator-level status as well, and the reason why, these might be kind of unique categories, but in our Carl Perkins funding, which is something that Nick and I work closely on, this is data that they look for in order to provide us grant money. So, the concentrators are students who took two or more CTE classes in one area, in one program area. So, we had 18 students take two or more classes in one program area, so either tech ed, or business, or art, or FACE. Students participating in work-based learning, so that includes youth apprenticeships and school-to-work opportunities, we had 11 last year. Students participating in dual enrollment, so this includes our Transcripted Credit and Start College Now. This number is going to be much larger this year because we're adding a large number of transcripted credit classes to our, to our course description book. Industry-recognized credentials, so 21 students, these are students that completed our welding program. This year, we'll be able to add our, well, we have two students in the CNA program, our EMT program is new this year, so we'll be able to add those students, and some of our students have completed the firefighting program through Nicolay, so those students also fit under the industry-recognized credentials. The employee, employer partners, we have 100, exactly, actually, we're up to exactly 100 employers now in our ACP directory. So, again, this is great, so students can access that contact information as we set up job shadows, school-to-work opportunities, teachers who want to look at bringing in a guest speaker, we have 100 different folks on there now, and all of the career clusters are represented. So, the Future Readiness Document, I want to start by thanking, we had an ACP team, and a couple of the members are here in the room, Mrs. Marvin, Mrs. Hermanson were big factors in, we met all year long, we met during PD time, and we also met after school quite often to put together a document that is part of our Academic and Career Plan, but really highlights and, and explains what is future readiness. So, if we want our students to be future-ready, what does that mean? And we know that every student has a different pathway. Some are going to technical school, some are going to four-year university, some are going in the military, some are going right into the workforce. So, how do we help get some indicators or some guidelines to ensure that students are ready for whatever pathway they're going to take? So, we'll start with the college-ready indicators. I guess we'll take a step back as well. So, there is a national future readiness website that we did use as part of our, kind of, to guide us through the process, and then we took some of those criteria, we personalized it to what we're doing here in Three Lakes. And so, for our, our vision of a college-ready Blue Jay, we looked at, that student should have five or more of the following criteria, starting with the academic piece, having a 3.0 GPA, earning As, Bs, and no less than a C in all, in all the classes. A lot of this criteria as well, when I work with students on college applications, the criteria for admissions in our UW system fits this criteria very closely. Engaging students, we look at graduation requirements on our core areas, we always want to make sure, again, that we're maximizing our time here, the core academic skills we know are essential for success at the collegiate level. One of the things I'll point out, you'll notice that there are highlighted portions in each one of the three categories, and what our goal is, we want to be very transparent. And for some of our students, potentially staff and parents, community members, they may not be aware of some of these, some of these items or acronyms that are on here. So, when this goes into our ACP and goes onto our website, we're going to have, we're going to have these linked, hyperlinked to documents that explain each and every one of those. So, there's, there's no question as to what are the graduation requirements, how many courses do I need to take in ELA, math, science, and social studies? Dual credit courses, we'll have a link to our transcripted credit classes, and we'll define the Start College Now program, so students and parents are more aware of that. ACT scores, again, based off the admission requirements for our UW schools, this aligns with being college-ready. Leadership positions and co-curricular activities, not just participating, but trying to be a captain, trying to be a leader, and we feel that the more leadership development that we can help students obtain and develop, the more successful they'll be at that collegiate level. And then, of course, completion of the FAFSA, going back to the cost of, the tuition cost, understanding that it costs a lot of money to attend school, is there any way through the free application for federal student aid, that students and parents can learn more about financial assistance that may be available to them? For our folks who want to go right into the, the career field, okay, and this is also for our students after going their collegiate, technical school or collegiate route, looking at career-ready indicators, having five or more of the following criteria, we know that attendance, in order to be a great employee, you have to attend, you have to be there. So, 95% of attendance in high school equates to nine, missing nine school days. So, missing any more than that, we feel could, you know, could negatively impact as an employee, something we want to emphasize. So, being here, being in attendance, and being engaging in everything that they're doing. Community service hours, we know that not only do you need 40 to graduate, but let's engage in that, let's participate in the community service opportunities that are going to help us develop skills that are applicable to the career of interest. Work-based learning experiences, we have our school-to-work internships and job shadowing, making sure that our students have their plan going right into the career field, let's utilize those to our fullest extent, again, to develop those skills and prepare for life after high school. Participating in two or more organized co-curricular activities, again, the more we participate, the skills that we develop are applicable to what we're going to do after high school. The College and Career Fair, that Wisconsin Education Fair over in Rhinelander, again, getting connected with employers, getting connected with folks that can help guide us and be mentors along the process here, finding out job openings, incredibly important during those opportunities, and then, electives, taking as many elective classes as the schedule will allow, again, to open our minds to the variety of opportunities, develop skills in those elective classes to prepare us. And then, finally, during wind time, working on creating that resume, that cover letter, having that ready to go if and when that job opportunity arises. Then finally, life-ready. So, this is one that, of course, we want all of our graduates to possess. Employability skills, we took a look, the DPI has a, an employability skill program, and they couple that with a youth apprenticeship and school-to-work program. And the five criteria, the main five criteria that they have, we decided as a team to pull that, pull those out, and we are going to, next year, have a copy of all five of these in every classroom. So, as students go from ELA to math, to science, to social studies, into their electives, these are going to be five employability skill areas that we're going to really focus on regardless of, of the lesson, regardless of the activities that the students are doing, because we feel that if students can continually improve on these, that life after high school is going to be a little bit easier for them, applicable to all, all of those career clusters and, and opportunities that students will have upon graduation. In our Child and Parenting Course, focusing on responsible decision-making and relationship skills, okay, one of the reasons why it's required, essential skills for responsible adults to have, and then same with financial literacy skills, with the requirement of personal finance. And then, finally, the expert learning skills portion, this, this was, we felt this was very important, we utilized the universal design for learning this year as a, as a staff, and knowing the importance of being a lifelong learner and becoming an expert learner. So, this is something will, will link up the UDL mindset in terms of just being that lifelong learner, never settling, always wanting to, to learn more, and there's some criterion things that go along with this that we'll continue to work with our students And then, finally, in your, in that Academic Career Plan, the last few sections dealt with these four items, and I'm just going to go over these, generally, career pathways, so we have local and regional career pathways that are set up by the, by the CISA and DPI, and these are pathways that, the more pathways we have, it correlates with our Carl Perkins and allows us to get some funding for those. There are criteria that we have to meet in order to offer the pathway, so we have five of them right now, and, but understanding even though the DPI or the, or CISA doesn't recognize a certain pathway, we, we still want to make sure that if a student is interested in pursuing that pathway, that we have a plan for them. And I feel like with the 106 classes that we offer to 155 students, we're well on track for that. Labor market information, again, so this, we'll have those conversations with students if they're wondering what is the likelihood of, of being a veterinarian up here in the Northwoods? Well, they do a job shadow with Dr. John, and they learn a little bit more about the experience, and then have those conversations with a person like that as a mentor, or look at the job market information for veterinarians or potentially vet techs up here in the Northwoods. So, we have the labor market information listed in the Academic and Career Plan to be able to utilize, have those conversations with students. Professional development for staff, as we onboard new staff and informing current staff of the plan, get how we increase student engagement, is something that's going to be continually discussed. And then, finally, individualized ACP support, looking at, in the IEPs, the Transition Plan Process, I know that this conversation is had in every IEP, the junior high and high school level. So, making sure that all students, every day, belong to this process and can own this process, and get adult support through the process. So, I know that was a lot of information, and there's even more in the 10-page document. Is there anything that I discussed today, or anything that you saw in the document that you would like me to elaborate on?
I guess one thing that stood out to me, I just thought was odd on the, like, like everything, I mean, it's great that we're taking such a broad approach, on the college-ready, I'm not sure that completing the FAFSA is really a college-ready indicator. I guess I could see, I personally would like to see some sort of, something to replace that.
Okay, and I guess I can explain, I, I've seen it over the years where students will say, I can't attend college because it costs too much, and that student will complete the FAFSA and then realize, well, I'm able to get X amount in a Pell Grants. So, understand, we could certainly take that off, but I, I do feel that when students complete the FAFSA, if it is something that we, and it's something that even if it's not on here, we continue, we have somebody come in, we, with every senior, we, we do the, the first part is setting up a PIN, and then, so, every 12th grade student does that here in the auditorium, and then, we send that information out to the parents to remind them that there's a, there's a student component, a parent component. So, if you feel like it doesn't belong here, we can take that out, that'll still be something that we'll, through the guidance department, that we'll emphasize.
Yeah, I think it definitely still needs to be done, without a doubt, I just don't know if I see that as a indicator that, hey, this kid's ready because they completed the application, wow. Maybe, and I could be wrong on that too, but I just, I think there's other indicators that I think could be definitely more beneficial.
I understand.
We can take that out. Like I said, don't necessarily take it out, but maybe add, maybe just add another, or, I don't, I don't know.
Good point.
Something we'll get.
Thank you, Mr. Ba.
Okay, thank you, and so, upon board approval, we'll put it up on the website, and it gets, you know, available for staff and for the community, and we'll replace the old, the existing Academic and Career Plan with a new one.
Is that ACP list or directory, is that available on the website also?
Yes. I believe it's up there.
Is it just for?
The directory. We'll look into that.
Does that ring in a bell with me?
We'll look into that. Okay, I know it's avail, it was shared with all staff, but I thought it was up there under the guidance.
We'll look.
I'll, I'll look, I'll look, if it's not, that's something that we need to get up. If it's not, that's something that we need to get up. Thank you.
So any changes or other questions or concerns before I ask for a motion? Did you have any follow-up for removal?
No, all good.
Okay. Can I carry any comments from you?
No, just other than that the team did a fabulous job. It was a year-long process, they worked extremely hard. There was a lot of components to it. So I think Mr. Bach and everybody who was involved in getting this done for the school district.
Can I carry that from staffing standpoint? This doesn't happen, or the leadership for this doesn't happen if Mr. Bach is the dean of students. So thank you for all supporting that staffing move. We wanted to go out, obviously the staffs are involved with it too, but there's a lot of, not just putting the plan together, but implementing that thing, it's pretty, it's a pretty wide brush stroke. I mean, not time for that if you're chasing my kids. For real. That's a good, that was a good staffing move for us.
Yeah, especially with the new changes coming. Okay, any other further questions or follow-up? Okay, I'll take your motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Three Lakes School District ACP slash E for E plan as presented.
Second.
Motion by Stacy, second by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard, motion passes, five-zero. All right, next up, consider approval of open enrollment applications.
Every year at this time, we bring to you the open enrollment applications, both in and out. And this way, we are able to go ahead, according to the calendar with the state law, notify parents as to whether they have been accepted, their students have been accepted, or they have been denied. This year, we have a total incoming application count of fourteen. Twelve of them were approved and two of them were denied. Nine are new, five are re-applications of current students. Denials are linked to if the student requires a service that we cannot provide or is if we have a cap in a special education program. Outgoing applications, we had a total of six. Two are applying to Northland Pines, two applying to Northland Pines who are already attending there on a current-year tuition waiver. One 4K student is applying to Northland Pines as they have a sibling already attending. And one 4K student is enrolled at Sugar Camp, but it is, they are considering an enrollment at Northland Pines. And at this point, the parents are undecided. So we'll go ahead and follow through the process, so it's in place according to what the parent decides to do. It's nice to see that we have more coming in than going out. Of course, this is going to move a lot during the summer months. Some people, it's not even on their radar yet to be thinking about what they're going to be doing. So we could see some changes. I choose not to get into specific students because of confidentiality and such, but this is a real general. I'm aware of the students, Nikki and I work very closely on that with notifying the parents and the letters have been issued and they're ready, you know, to make sure that the parents know where they're at. So with that, is there any questions that you have for me about the open enrollment at this time?
Is there any knowledge or information as to what their motivation for moving to Pines is?
It's much less than it's been in the past. We, it's been all over the board when we have checked. It's generally, they have a connection there, a family connection, or there could be an interest in a sport that we do not offer, that sometimes has an influence. If it's a 4K student, it's generally ties to a parent's employment and their daycare. That's what they need to be able to do is get them into, you know, a situation when it works within their family's schedules. It's not because I don't want to be in Three Lakes or I don't like Three Lakes. When we've done personal calls or followed up, that has not been the case. But Pines tends to be the school that attracts from us more so than the others. We tend to get more in from Rylandale and Crandon than we ever have going out.
Any other questions?
Obviously, if we approve the outgoing on the undecided and they change their mind, they're allowed to stay.
Correct.
The nine newest, nice to see. Do we have any info on the incoming? Why they chose Three Lakes?
They, they generally put it on their application. It varies again. Sometimes the parent just goes with, they feel that this is the best programming opportunity for their child. Once in a while, it's because there's, again, a connection to the district. But generally, it's the programming that is cited.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion when ready.
I'll make a motion to approve open enrollment applications that meet the criteria as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion by Michelle, second by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? None heard, motion passes, five-zero. Next, consider approval of the Three Lakes School District pupil nondiscrimination five-year self-assessment.
Okay, this is the report that I've been working on with many people throughout the year. And it actually began last year when we were identified as a selected school district for the civil rights compliance audit that we went through. So it was almost a blessing in disguise because a lot of the work that had to be drawn upon, we had already started it earlier. And so what you're seeing before you tonight is a required document that needs to be done every five years. And the DPI has been very specific about what criteria we have to cover. I, I'm assuming you've had a chance to look it over. And I don't need to read it word for you, word for you, but I think we should go through the sections. And then if there's any specific questions, you can ask me about that. It's very important that we always note that our, that we do not discriminate. That's a big portion of what this report is and what we're looking for, that provide equitable education for all students. If you take a look at the first page, the table of contents, it breaks down what the process was. And then it outlines the eight areas of where policies, procedures, and protocols had to be evaluated, as well as data. And within those eight areas, we took a look at, a deeper dive into what our programming looked like, what evidential findings we found based on data and through the process. So the introduction of this process really began with the people listed within the document. And more so, myself, Mr. Zeus, Mrs. Volk, Mr. Bach, Mrs. Opal, Mrs. Eisen, Mrs. Maney, Mrs. Wales, Mrs. West, and Mrs. Maney, Jeanie Maney, were very instrumental in pulling together some of the data as far as what we needed, as well as the programming documents and what we had to put into place. So when we reviewed the documents, it was something that we had to do to look and see how our participation looked equitably. And where it started looking at our career and tech education courses, it got much more into what our programming was, our athletic opportunities, et cetera. So that's where this comes from, and it's based in legal code. And it was, it was difficult in the way that it was extremely vague as to what had to be there. There was required components by DPI that told us, these are the eight criteria. But there wasn't actually a specific, this is how you do it, which would have made it a little bit better. We kind of rallied and worked together within the Cisas and within the different districts. And, you know, I network a lot with the different superintendents and their teams and came up with various templates. And this is the one that I felt really worked for us. And of course, it has been streamlined to meet Three Lakes' needs as well. There's a history on the cycles for you, if you want to review where it came from. It started back in nineteen eighty-nine and then how it has transitioned to what it is now. And in the twenty-three, twenty-four cycle, which is cycle six, districts were required to do the self-evaluation. And in that, it was requested that we looked at those eight areas that I outlined for you. The process and timeline started last year in January, when we held an initial meeting with DPI to talk about the topic of pupil nondiscrimination. And our team was formed. Then in February and March, the folks that I mentioned already, we worked on finding documents, procedures, policies, and getting those turned into the DPI for review. They reviewed the materials in April, and then in May, they came back to us with interviews of administrators, staff members, and students at Three Lakes. They took an examination of our facilities, did a physical tour, looked at what we had to offer. And then they listed what they called their findings and gave us what we needed to work on. That corrective action plan is what is referred to as the findings. And then we've had one year to get them addressed. We have our last quarter cycle coming up, June fifteenth, and we only have just a few items to put in this last time. We are probably pretty close to ninety-five percent complete, and we will be done within the timeline. And this will be accomplished, so. And we're not supposed to be up for it again for at least five years, so let's hope. The rules don't change. It was a lot of, a lot of man-hours, but, you know, again, if it's helping the programming within the district become better, then it does become worth it. A heavy focus then in this was, we continued then with the second part of this being that the state required it from all districts. And we really looked again at all of our policies, which have work to be done. And we know there is work to be done. We looked at our counseling curriculum policies and procedures, that's probably the most intense focus. We published a legal one, legal notice, so the public was aware that this was taking place. And then we did the final review in April. And then at the end of this meeting or this discussion, I do need to have board approval of this document because it is a requirement for DPI to have board approval in the process. Just to touch on it a little bit, went through what our demographics, our overview and enrollment looked like, talked about our district structure, our mission, and then included our annual goals and our long-range plan, which when they're on the district website, those are hyperlinked that you can take a look at that, which you all know very well. But if somebody is reviewing our nondiscrimination plan, they can see where our goals are driving, what is being done. So that's kind of a brief intro. Any questions to how we got to this process? Okay. Looking then at the different tenants, there's eight of them. The first one was the school board policies and administrative procedures. And that was pretty much defined by DPI, what we had to do. We had to look at our policies, that looked at the protected categories, addressed harassment and if there was a separate anti-harassment policy. Made sure that policies are published annually and easily accessible. We had found about that through the original complaints, so we had already worked on that and polished that up. Took a quick look at that, which resulted in looking at the procedure for the complaint process, found that it wasn't as easily available as one would want it to be. So we made changes to make that more accessible. So looking at the findings, we do have approved policy addressing discrimination against pupils on the basis of the protected classes. They're generally in all areas of school operation, programs and activities. They are written to provide procedures for the filing, investigating, and resolving of complaints. That is outlined, and we're going to do even a little bit more with that in the future. We meet compliance, but I do think that's something that we can work on, even be more specific. The district was, has contracted with Policy Resource Guide, which we've been doing. That's through our Board Docs platform. They are a resource for the most up-to-date of policies. Some school districts do what is called NEOLA. We work through PRG, and that is where we get our legal reference and documents from. We have a trained compliance officer, that is Justin Zeus. And information is shared on the district website in the handbooks. So that, in a nutshell, is what our findings were. What we analyzed was the different resources there, including the student handbooks, the staff handbooks, and the athletic and activities handbooks. And then some of the policies specifically are listed there for you as to what was examined. And then a few improvements and recommendations. We have here listed our, the designated compliance officers are Justin Zeus and Carrie Volk is our other contact, especially with the five oh four plans and such, that is listed. We did the legal notice. We continue updating the policies through our Board Docs. That is a quick rundown of the policies towards nondiscrimination. Specific questions on that? I've got oodles and oodles of files, if you ever want to read them down and dirty on it. But thank you, Jen, for helping me get this into a twenty-two-page document. Then part two is enrollment trends in classes and programs. There's a lot of interest here, both at the state and the federal level, wanting to make sure that there is a wide range of opportunities offered for students, which Three Lakes does a fabulous job of that. And then taking it a step farther, making sure that all groups are being able to participate in areas of interest. So in a summary of the data, our findings are outlined here. We did find that there was some discrepancies between students with and without disabilities. And this prompts further investigation into the student enrollment procedures. And remember, this is based on a three-year rolling average. Some of this is based simply on student interest. But we always want to make sure that there's no barriers that we don't perceive that a student feels that they're not eligible for a program for whatever reason. So this is more at the high school level. So we were looking at that, and we have small cell sizes too. So that does fall into the consideration of our data. At the junior high, there was no significant data differences because in the seventh and eighth grade block courses, for the most part, those are required and then kids are doing the electives of interest area. At the high school level, there's not a diverse racial population. So what that results in is if you only have one or two students who are identified in this group and they're not participating, or one is and one isn't, your data says, well, you're below. But again, it's the cell size. Something that we looked at was at our participation between males and females. I, it holds true for us, if you look on the long-range average, that there's more interest for males than for females in those career paths. And that it's the same with the disabilities or without disabilities. That's interesting to me because I feel like you see both boys and girls involved. But again, in talking with Mr. Bach about it, it's really very much interest-driven. So when there was a big push a few years ago of interest in the nickelade welding program, you saw some more males in that class. Now, there's maybe a little bit drop down to in some other areas where there's an increase on one or the other. But the data kind of pulls forward and shows that our males do tend to take that pathway more than our females. Let's see, what else we have? We have the other pathways that we talked about, that Ryan talked about this evening also, through CISA nine, both regional and local pathways. through um CISA nine, both regional and local pathways. We also offer the dual credit options such as start college now. We have the transcripted courses, those are continuing to grow. Um, we're real pleased with that for our students and and the um opportunities. They're getting right within their high school education and preparation as they're leaving. There's been an emphasis on our work-based learning experiences with our apprenticeships. And that also is growing through jobs shadowing. And um the interest again is growing based on getting it out there, connections with your your partners, and then the student interest. I know Ryan is pretty pleased, Ryan Bach is pretty pleased with where things are going because, you know, even as few years ago, as I would say, four years ago, this was not nearly as developed as where we have gotten to. So it's a really big step in the right direction. And then the school counselors have to do routine evaluation of their programs, activities, and even what they are giving out as information to make sure there's no bias or discrimination happening or preventing certain student groups from not participating. Questions on that section? Um, few recommendations I have listed there, you can go through that. But again, it's basically, it boils down to making sure we're communicating with our students all the time what their opportunities are and and um giving them options if it's not meeting what they need within the district current programming. And that's where our partnerships with RVA or or other um options come into place. Then the next one we looked at pretty heavily was our curriculum and materials used in counseling, instruction, and pupil assessment and testing. This was really deeply dove into when we had the audit. So we knew that we had this stuff up to snuff. Now, as they say, um, Mrs. Opal had redone the entire um four K through sixth grade um counseling Wisconsin standards, matching what the state requires, bringing that back up to what we need it to be. So that is top-notch and ready to go. Um, Ryan and her have been working very closely on the four K through twelve curriculum. And in that process, making sure that their own practices, the the information, the lessons being taught, et cetera, are all meeting the non-discrimination as well as the encouraging of opportunities to take place. I outlined for you what the curriculum being used in at the elementary is. That is the second step curriculum. And then Zelo is used at the six twelve for their academic and career readiness. Um, we felt the integrity of the materials met all the criteria that was posted. And it's in a continual revision, review process. Um, this is something that the counselors are routinely doing, is looking, reading, evaluating. When students bring up a question or a concern, making sure that our programming and information always meets the needs and is understandable by our kids. And we will continue doing that as we have been. Any questions on that section? Okay. And then looking at the trends of and patterns of disciplinary actions, including suspensions, expulsions, and handling of pupil harassment. Here, um, gave you the specific numbers for the three years that were analyzed. And you know, there are some findings there to be discussed. But in the overall scheme, if you think of how many students and how many hours in a day, it's our our discipline, our what you would call our more intensive discipline is very low in the district compared to what some districts are experiencing. However, I say that part of that is attributed to the connectedness and preventing issues before it becomes a situation. Sometimes it happens, but a lot is done before things get to this this point generally. Um, our findings, I I think the data is real. It tells a story. I always say data is not emotional. Um, male students are more likely to be suspended than female students. And male students are more likely to have disciplinary action against them than females, based on our data. So then that's deeper dove into and looked at what the specific reasons are. Um, students with disabilities was nineteen percent is that our population. But twenty-three percent were reported as being tracked in discipline data. Again, that could be a couple of student incidents, but that's something we want to keep close tabs on because those numbers should be very comparable rather than, you know, you wouldn't want to see your students with disability populations seeing a fifty percent or your students with, um, that might be racially diverse having a bump up there because then you would have to look, is there a reason that this is happening? We looked at our suspension rates, our policies and procedures, handbooks, the wise data discipline, um, data, and then our infinite campus data. And recommendations are to, which is partly why we're sitting here, thank you, Nikki, designate one staff member as a data specialist to ensure accuracy in the data collection. Yeah?
I don't understand why they, they're not all added together.
Those two of them got missed. These are, this one's correct.
Yeah, these two are correct. So a minority out of our totals. I will revise that and get that to you before we publish it. Okay. Yeah.
The first two are correct. But then that would skew the totals on the right.
Yeah, it does. It's only the male and females that are.
That are showing?
Yes.
Okay. I, I'm not sure because I've looked at that many times. Probably when I copied and pasted it over.
There, when you look at the percentage, right? But like, these totals, this is the total number of students. I think.
Yeah.
That's why it was set up that way.
Oh, I see, okay, those two total, okay.
Correct, so we don't have a three-year rolling total for the minorities in special ed.
I was looking across the other way at the totals and had a different reason.
I will go ahead and update that and get that to you in your Board Docs so you can look at it, review it. Anything else?
They might not affect the percent.
Well, and I, I don't know if the. I don't know if the intent was to not skew the like total discipline per year. No, it wouldn't matter.
Yeah, because that's male and female versus the break on.
Yeah.
I'm guessing the percentages are right, it's just missing the total. It's probably a different formula or formula from a different.
I will have to, because I don't know, I don't have that chunk with me right now. But I do believe that the percentages are correct because we did look at that a lot. But I will make sure that that is in case, in fact, the case before we publish it. Okay, and so then going down to our recommendations. Again, um, I just mentioned that we continue with our character, citizen of the month, characters and skills, policies and procedures that are in place. Um, we continue to monitor our detentions and suspensions, both at the elementary and the high school level. And again, it's about building those relationships with our kids. Okay? Anything else on that one before we go ahead?
Is there anything that compares the population? Maybe Ms. Volk can answer this question. So if you look at percentage-wise, there's a significant uptick in the twenty-two, twenty-three on special education students in discipline. Is is there anything else like relative to population increase or anything else? Like, is there any other factors?
I think it probably does stem a lot from our high percentage of students in special ed, which is kind of on the down. We're trying to do things universally now to meet students' needs. But I think that probably is a factor in that.
Just like from a data perspective, it looks like we give a hundred, over a hundred percent increase in special education student discipline, so.
Okay. Ready to move on?
You mentioned, you know, citizen of the month and stuff like that. Surecamp doesn't offer, you know, student of the month. So it's kind of, there's a break between the schools there. Be nice to see that implemented in Surecamp. I know it's been discussed.
Yeah.
But it would be nice to see that.
It's something that, you know, there is uniqueness to both, both schools. But I do think it's something that could be revisited and knowing that it's something that is looked at with data. If it's not through this program, maybe there's another way that we could capture it. Okay, then looking at participation. Oh, there's no other mistakes in the data. But here we're looking at our offerings for male athletics and female athletics um and our junior high athletic offerings. And then we look also at our um clubs and activities. Give you a listing of some of the things that are available to our students.
Is this just some of them or is this?
This is the the ones that were in the last three years that were used. There could be something that there wasn't any interest, so there wasn't participation.
Because like baseball and softball are not on here for high school. Isn't that a high school sport? I mean, I I understand why it's not on junior high, but I I thought it should have been.
It should be on high school. Yep. Okay. Another revision. Yeah, junior high is a little bit different.
Yes.
But high school should definitely be showing. So we can add that into the chart. Any other questions on that before we go to the next piece? We included some of the elementary um activities that are listed. That wasn't a requirement, but that is something unique to both schools. So thought we should include that as well because it starts young with participation and continues to grow. Um, findings again are very similar to what you've seen. We are considered Title IX compliant. Um, participation for both male and female is representative of the enrollment of the district. Um, enrollment is open and all students are invited to participate. Uh, let's see here. One thing about the district that is unique is that the interest in providing as many activities and opportunities as possible have continually been the the trend of the district. If there is an interest in trying to get that to students so they can participate. It has been very supported by the school board. We made sure that there wasn't any kind of um conflict with Wednesday nights that's still considered the night for religious programs. And um schedules are noted to work around that. And then recommendations for improvements, there can always be more improvement. Continuing to increase the participation rates in all athletic programs and activities. Focus on improving um the participation rates of some of the more diverse groups that might not be represented as much as we would like them to be. And um our students of um special ed or who do have disabilities, try to increase that as well. However, we do have some nice participation with our groups there. Continuing to identify any of the barriers that might be getting in the way. And that is kind of an ongoing process. So. Is there anything I can answer further with that? Okay, and then looking at the awarding of scholarships and other forms of recognition. Um, went through heavily what our awarding of scholarships was with the discrimination process, our non-discrimination process. And um looked at that data and took the information, getting to the summary report. It's pretty important that we take a look at that. Now I'm wondering if these percent, persons are not. No, those are zero, so that is correct there. All right. But I messed all of that up. But when you look at the amount that has been awarded, um, this goes right from the letter that Mr. Bach sends. That's almost two million dollars has been awarded in local scholarships since the year two thousand. For a district this size, that is an incredible amount of money. Uh, we found that here the scales tip a little bit the other way where you see sixty-two percent of our scholarships are awarded to females and thirty-eight percent are awarded to males. Um, again, scholarships are based on interest and application and filling out of the the work and the process. And part of the discussion was, we want to make sure that everybody knows what to do, how to do it. And they have that opportunity. It was really dedicated effort to make sure that happens. Parents are definitely notified when the window is open and they are re-notified as to um the process with the communication, so they can apply. Uh, let's see here, the criteria for all of the scholarships is accessible to all students. Um, we have seen that our students with disabilities are consistently underrepresented as scholarship recipients over the past three years of data. And that is an area that we need to work at, trying to make sure our students who are identified make sure that they know that they have support and they are given assistance to apply for scholarships, if that is in fact a barrier. Further questions on that?
Do they take into account, I mean, who actually applied? Actual applications?
No, because this, this, you're assuming that every student applied.
It's just based on percent, yeah.
Correct, but that is not the case.
Yeah.
Okay, we're getting down there. Now, looking at the district efforts to achieve equality and educational opportunity for um non-discrimination. Looking at this area, we had to ensure that all staff has high expectations for all students. There's an ongoing effort in place to ensure the quality of the education being provided, that school is welcoming, the environment is welcoming to students, parents, and guardians. And that the equality and and non-discrimination are considered in the planning and implementation of staff development. And that does permeate through what we do. So looking at some of our summary findings, we have moved to the universal design for learning. Um, if you recall, we've done quite a bit with that because we don't want to teach just to the students in the middle. We want to keep, reach the kids who are on the high end and the kids who are more on the um challenged end or may may struggle, but learn through different capabilities. And so if you adjust your curriculum and your instruction so you can engage them, then they will have increased learning. So that has been a very intentional goal of the district the last two years. We're working on our standards, we're working on our assessments. That's the next step that we've been involved in. And um really getting into our data, seeing how our students are doing, what is working and what we need to do to improve instructional practices. We also keep continuing to look at our um individualized education plans and make sure that our IEPs are addressing what kids need, not only by giving them individualized instruction for their needs, but also including them in the universal curriculum with their classmates so they're getting that exposure as a, for instance, tenth grade student should with all other tenth grade students. Then that reinforcement is taking place, you know, in addition to. And we'll continue to look at our long-range plan, review the the four years of school report card data. That's where we really can pull out the specific demographics and look at that. Carrie does a really nice job on that when we do the school report card re- review and focus more on that. And uh our data screeners right now include also that we do the state testing. And then we do our FastBridge screener, that's a benchmark test to help us know where our kids at, our ranking three times a year. And where the next steps really involve now, we're looking much deeper at the data that began this year and will be more of our professional development and practice next year. Any specific questions on that? We're living the process as part of our long-range plan and that's really being come fully implemented at this point. Okay, well then finally the last one is just a brief, this is almost like a boilerplate section that states if you have technology, including electronic communications, that it is accessible. The district is, you know, we, we do have many things in place. We do make sure that there's individual devices available for our students. They, we are a, a school that is basically one-to-one. Families who might be challenged with wifi access, we can provide for them a hotspot. We communicate through our website, Facebook, digital newsletters, Infinite Campus and other methods of alert. We keep, you know, a pretty good handle on that. Thank you to Jen West for making sure that's always up to snuff, even on a 4:30 cold snow day. But we, we try to keep very connected as much as we can. And that is something that we'll be looking at a little bit more deeply because this is going to be connected, in my opinion, to the new library plan that has to be formulated and, and put into place before the end of next year. So we'll have a natural crossover to see how those are linking. And then to wrap this up, just that there was a participation or there was an opportunity to participate by the publishing of this in the newspaper, by discussion at staff meetings and within the administration meetings. So this is not something that was a secret. It's been in process for a year, so nobody should say, I didn't know that was going on. So I know that was a really long one, but it was a requirement that we had to get through. What I will do is make those revisions and get them to you. I will bring it back next month for, we can do approval of it at that time.
When's your submission?
I have to have it submitted actually by May 30th, but if, if we do an approval, because I have, I've already sent in the paperwork that says it's done, that, that's the submission piece. So technically that is done. If we do an approval tonight, I would say, state that the motion would have to say, it would be approved with the revisions, revisions as stated. If you're comfortable with that, I know that's a bigger ask of you, but I would, it would, you know, cross our Ts and dot our Is if we could do it that way. Because I can have that to you tomorrow already. And then with, you know, if you just give me a, a yea or a nay, I will make sure it's ready to go before we put it up on the website. Does everyone feel comfortable with that?
Really the changes are not, they don't, they don't take away from the data recommendations or the findings. It's simply two sports and a few numbers.
Yeah.
So.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. It's, it's really hard too. I don't want any mistakes, but boy, when you think about all the massive amounts that we've gone through. And again, I've got to say, another big shout out to Nikki and Jen who did a lot of the, the help with me. I mean, everybody contributed that they could, but you couldn't have everybody with their hands in the pot. You know, you have to get that.
And it's very difficult when you look at the same data over and over to see the, the discrepancies. It's easier when someone who is not married to the information.
That's a good point. Okay, that is it for that report.
I guess my only request on that is when you do double check the, if you could just double check the sports numbers to make sure that they did include, I mean, it very likely could just be that the list didn't include the two sports book.
I know for a fact that the list did not include, the two sports is not, has nothing to do with the data.
The number, the numbers are still correct?
The numbers are correct. It was just putting them into a chart form.
I figured as much, but.
But that one I do know.
Appreciate the work and you giving us updates along the way as well. Anyone have any other questions, concerns?
Thank you to all who put in the time. That is not fun to have to sit and stare at over and over like Alicia said, but thank you for everybody.
Yes.
All right, when ready, I'll take a motion, adding in the modifications.
I'll make a motion to approve the Three Lakes School District pupil non-discrimination. Five-year self-assessment with modifications. With approved modifications.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Michelle. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none heard, motion carries five-zero. All right, so next we move on to graduation awards update.
Okay, there's no changes as far as the scheduled times. I have those listed for you in your information. However, we do need to find some coverage and, for presentations. At the high school ceremony on May 23rd, 9:30, Josh is not able to be present at that time. So is there anybody on the board who would like to or can attend at that, that time to do our presentation for our retirees would be Renee Shaff, Jeannie Maney, Al Vodas and Terry Crow.
I, I apologize, I really do wish I could be there to do that, but I did have a legal issue come up that I cannot, I cannot reschedule or miss. And I'm not going to, I can't push, possibly not making.
Do you mind if I let you know in the morning? I'm a probable.
Sure. And Alicia, that would be great if you let me know if, if you cannot, with your permission, I'd be more than willing to do that on behalf of the board. But I will wait to hear from you. And then the other one that we don't have representation is for at the Three Lakes Elementary Awards Ceremony. That's May 30th at 2 o'clock. And I'm happy to present there.
Going once? Anyone? Okay.
Okay, then I will plan on the elementary presentation. Other pieces of business is I had given you some thoughts for discussion and it's really timely because as we're doing the programming, Jen is going to need this information. The distribution of diplomas has been something that in the past, our past president, he liked to ask the board members who wanted to present. We can continue to do that, but in the protocols that I've reviewed, it's usually the board president that hands out the diplomas. There's not a hard and fast rule. I just thought we should clarify that now, what we're doing this year and maybe, you know, going forward. So we have that procedure in, and practice in place. So what I'm going to need to know is presentation of diplomas, or, or, I'm sorry, yes, the presentation of diplomas and then the presentation of the class of 2024. Who would be doing that? And what your thoughts are on the procedural.
I will be at the graduation ceremony. I am happy to do it if anyone else is interested or are willing. I'm not opposed to that either. What are the thoughts? I mean, if people want to volunteer, like regardless of position, say like Stacy last year, right? Her son is graduating. I think having it on a volunteer basis, based on a connection to the graduating class is a great thing. I don't think it has to be defined by a position.
Okay.
In my opinion.
I agree with that. I think it is nice to let, have that part be based on connection, yeah.
Okay. And so, um, presentation of the diplomas. Is that going to be you or do you guys want to talk about that?
I think that's what, that's what was, we were just.
Okay.
That, I think that was the diploma part was what was just discussed. It would be the presenting the class that still has to be decided.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any feedback? I have no prep, I have, are you asking for this particular ceremony?
Yes, we need it in the program.
Yeah, we need to clarify something that's going in the program for this one, but I think Terry's also kind of saying.
General practice.
So you have to kind of two assignments.
As far as presenting the class, I would, I don't know, that's, that's always been a history of being the president. I am not opposed to changing it, but that's just, I don't know, that's always kind of been an honor bestowed there, I guess. I would lean towards leaving it.
I'm comfortable with the volunteering. Does anyone else have an emotional connection to the class of 2024? Otherwise.
I did make one, you know, one student did ask me last year if I would be the one, but no. I'm not kidding though, it wasn't junior last year. Stacy, will you be the one? I have no idea. But no, I did not need to. I will give him a hug later.
I'm happy to.
Okay, so you will do both then. So Jen, it'll be Alicia for both this year. And next year?
Did you volunteer? Sorry, I, and I missed it. Did you volunteer for the diploma part?
She did.
I said I'm, I'm ha, I'm happy to do it unless there's someone who wants to.
Yeah.
So are we good?
No, I'm, it's fine, I just, I, I guess I was down a different path when I was hearing the discussion, so. No, I, well, I'm sorry. It does not matter as far as, I just, I was, thought we were just on the discussion of, does it need to, does the presentation of the diplomas need to stay with the president or is that still volunteer? And I was just different, down a different path.
And from what I understand, we decided we're going to just decide each year.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what we decided.
And, and Alicia in this case is doing both.
Correct.
Okay, all good.
Unless there's someone else.
I've had my turn. Mitch, I got thrown into it my first year. I love you.
I remember that, yes.
I'm gonna watch Alicia do a great job.
Take, lead by example.
Were the other ones already taken? I didn't, the Sugar Camp and Three Lakes junior high?
Yes. I, well, I'll just cover what we had. Stacy, you and Michelle had said you would both be at the junior high eighth grade graduation. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there something that we need to do for that?
Um, yes, at the, at the junior high Nicole Lewis will be getting a service award. And that Sugar Camp Elementary, it will be Robin Lemoine and Keisha Holger. And at Sugar Camp, I have Alicia written down. And then at Three Lakes Elementary, I have myself, junior high, Michelle and Stacy. And then at the high school, Alicia's going to get back to me, but we will get that cleared up for you for tomorrow. Do you need it for tomorrow? You don't need to know that one for anything? Okay, not a program or anything.
Something changes on my work schedule where they cancel or postpone or something, that I will let you know.
For the high school one?
Yeah.
And the junior high is, is that also the diplomas for the eighth grade? Or does somebody else do that? I know I did it one year, but I don't remember why. My, I, well, I didn't have a childhood, so I don't know why.
For the diplomas?
Yeah.
Thinking a lot on stage, Amy?
Yeah.
Okay, do you two want to fight it out?
We'll talk.
Okay.
Sounds good.
You're gonna let me know?
You've got one and eight.
Yeah, right.
If you want it.
Okay. Is there pictures? Okay, nobody wants a fat old lady in their picture.
Stop it.
It's fantastic, you're all, you go viral, it's fantastic. It's fun. If I can do what you can do.
There's going to be pictures, Michelle.
Yeah, it's awesome, it's awesome. It's how you become famous.
About forty-seven of them.
Okay, I think we have that covered.
Okay. Anything else on that one? All right, we'll move into recognition of service and retirement report.
Okay, so I can make that quick. For 10 years of service, we'll be receiving an award will be Steve Razinsky, Nicole Lewis and Jen Meyer. 20 years of service will be Keisha Holger. And then our retirements are going to be at the 20 years of service or more are going to be Renee Shaff, Al Vodas, Jeannie Maney, Terry Crow and Robin Lemoine.
Sad to see five of them go at the same time, but when you look at the number of years, that's pretty incredible.
Yes.
Hundred and forty-seven years.
Yeah.
Forty-two years.
All right, any other feedback on that? Otherwise we'll move into the school forest camp three update.
Okay, the update I have for you is that we're working with MSA to come up with a plan to put the driveway up on the other end of the property. So you would come in off a bit closer to the west side. They're working on that now. I don't have anything to share with you at this point. And then the communication that I thought we needed to talk about was, there was communication from our attorney representing the district and the insurance company that the Crevecas's attorney had contacted them and they had said they would agree to a stipulation and order that would be including the following to dismiss the case. But within their comments were the three points that were made and shared with you. That the district would just agree to not construct or operating a trap shooting range within .75 miles of the Crevecas and Nikki property. Number two, that the district will not construct or operate a trap shooting range on any school property unless and until Wisconsin law is clarified to exempli, exemplary allow it. And then three, an agreement that any future development of the property for the school forests must include the existing from 2020 wetland disturbances and the calculation of the wetland impact. And the attorney from them had said she included the third because they felt there was confusion among the school board as to the conditions and criteria, which I'm not quite sure what that is because I believe we're pretty clear on where we stand.
There was a question asked regarding, in meeting regarding the wetlands and if we moved and took the trap range off the table, would we still have to, would, would that, what has already been disturbed have to be factored into the total? I think that's where it's coming from.
Okay.
Because it was questioned in the meeting.
Okay. So I had advised our attorney Ron Statler that I couldn't make an agreement without the board having input on these stipulations and would have to have this meeting for you guys to discuss before we would have any kind of a response to this.
We can't speak for future boards. So number one is, is, I would say completely off the table, in my opinion.
I think we don't get in the business of defining what the board will do next year. Ultimately, this could impact the school district for decades. I don't think it's fair or appropriate to agree. Future development of the property should be done in conjunction with law and the appropriate mechanisms that we've used in place to ensure that we meet the necessary requirements for the property as far as the wetland disturbance. But one and two are. out.
I would assume these are all inclusive, so if any are out, then I'm assuming all is out. So I would say that unfortunately, things must continue, must continue.
And I would just like to reiterate that the board did take action and it is in the board minutes that development of this, by, well, even the board has changed a little bit now with Mitch coming on, but it stands that in our planning going forward, we are not looking to develop a trap range on that piece of property. Not now, not in the next however many months you want to say. We have already found a solution for that. That is the plan. We're hoping to make that a more long-term plan. And there's no intention to be trying to say, well, we're not going to do it and then change course. That, that is not the intention. What we are saying, if I'm hearing you correctly, because this is where I fall, is in five years from now or ten or twenty or thirty, I won't be here. Likely many of us won't be here and we will not know what the situation or the law is. We can speak to what we're doing, what you're doing as a board now under our advice and direction. And I think that this board has been very intentional about the purposes, about following. We have never shirked our responsibility, if you will, as far as following the procedure for applications, for permits, et cetera. We have been very transparent and done everything under the advisement, you know, with our consultants and the DNR with what we thought was appropriate. So that is not the intention. I just feel that we need to make that clear. Our development right now on this piece of property is so we can get students out there for environmental education, that we can have teaching and learning happening, that we can be using trails and exploration. And I just feel it's important we reiterate that because that is the facts of where we're at right now.
Yes, correct.
Hopefully, they realize the impact that they are having on these students and, and our ability to move forward with this. And I hope they reconsider.
Agreed. Very good. Well, then I will go ahead and have a communication with Mr. Stadler as to our discussion here. We will reflect it within our minutes. And of course, our meetings are recorded, so anybody who has access chooses to see them will hear the conversation. And I'll bring you another update next month.
Thank you. Just one other question for clarification. Was there any feedback from our representation on the requirement?
Mr. Stadler?
Yes.
Yes, he did not advise us to accept these terms.
Thank you. Any other feedback?
No.
I think we're on the same page.
All right. Thank you for that update. Next week, we move to district-related positive happenings. It's a race.
Okay, I saw one, not it.
I'll start. In about a half hour, we'll have a whole bunch of district-related positive happenings to talk about in an hour or three, but a few that I want to highlight because there's been a ton since last we met. First thing, we'll start with science, specifically science Olympics. We sent a group down to UNBI Oshkosh for the state science Olympics competition. Our solar oven crew took first. We got second in solar photography and third in solar car competition. That's in the state. That's statewide competitions. That's super cool. More, more locally from the science world, three, three different things recently that are really good community and, and science academic stuff. Compost bin donated by the Lions Club. Our ecology class has been collecting all our food scraps from the food service here, which is quite a bit, and, and working on composting. That's in conjunction with the Lions Club locally. Three Lakes Fish and Wildlife donated enough money to buy youth bee suits, so we got second graders out there. Check out the bees. Two pictures. I think, Jen, you've got a few of them. Okay, I'll send them to you. They're really cool. Our second graders are out there working with the bees. And last but certainly not least, real soon, and we're not gonna tell you, Mr. Update, where they're going, but the trout that we've grown in science are getting released into some local streams in conjunction with Trout Unlimited. So, cool stuff from the science department. We just had actually two different days where we had grad panels where kids from a variety of different post-secondary choices and options and in various progressions of just out of school or three or four years out of school to talk with our, we had super good attendance in those, kids signing up for those win sessions to come in and talk with our, our grad panels. So that's, the second year in a row, we've done that and it's expanding. It's really, really cool time. Music. It's a busy spring for music because you got state solo ensemble, then you got large group festival. All the concerts that many of us went and watched, really solid, solid stuff. At the state solo ensemble, we had two solo acts earn firsts at the state level. We also had a choir ensemble earn a first place rating at the state solo ensemble. Forensics, folks, everybody that went to state forensics from our place got a gold, perfect score. Right across the board. Everyone. Like, that's awesome. That, that, that's notable stuff. Finance Bowl just got back, finance and investment bowl, I should say, from the state competition. They fared well against Stanley Boyd, knocked them out of the competition, knocked Dryland out of the competition. Then they lost, I know. But then they did lose a tight one with Marshfield after regulation. They were dead heat. Nobody got any questions wrong. And then they lost the tight one in overtime, so they got sent home. And the good news with that is they'll be home in time for their senior awards tonight. And last but certainly not least, I, I, I don't typically mention individuals, but I gotta mention two individual students. One, one being Colleen Hermsen. You've probably never heard of Colleen Hermsen. She's probably not been in any headlines that you've seen in the paper or anything like that. But recently, her, a piece of her artwork was selected by the Association of Wisconsin Art Teachers as, as a piece of work that's gonna be featured at next year's, or the next art convention at the state level. So, super cool. And Colleen's also the kid that won our international foods, advanced foods culinary chop contest. So, super talented kid. Colleen Hermsen's got a lot of talents going for her right now. And Jared Kaufman, the WIAA Scholar Athlete Award for the second year running. We've got Three Lakes Representation in the statewide award for WIAA Scholar Athlete.
No, I'm gonna call out one for you.
All right, go ahead, go ahead.
Sawyer Zeus was given an exemplary award at state solo ensemble, or he was nominated for.
That was one of the ones I called about. I just didn't say his name.
That's like the highest, highest you can get in the states. That's a perfect score at state with honors. It's amazing. We don't get too many of those, so I'm calling out four.
No musical talent coming from me.
I can go. We had our SEO color run this past weekend and I think we had twelve or thirteen staff members there, so the paint was spread around a little bit more this year. Students raised over, I think it was over five thousand dollars and then I believe Jess Edgeworthson kind of headed up some more corporate sponsors and also raised close to five thousand dollars. So it was a great day, community-wide and staff-wide and students as well, so. And then I'd like to thank Phil and Ryan for giving my sixth graders a tour. We came over last week and we launched rockets and then ate lunch with middle school, met with teachers and this is kind of something we do every year with sixth graders, especially from Sugar Camp, so they're not in this building. And then finally, fourth grade, I think from Three Lakes and Sugar Camp, both went to Tree Haven today and, and just got back. I didn't have a chance to talk to Robin about how it went, but. So, yeah. And we have a ten-day countdown starting this Friday. Movies and everything else, so.
That's all, huh? Yep. I guess that's me next. I just wanted to say a little bit about the volunteer fair that we were able to participate. The eighth graders were invited to join and I thought it was really neat that the kids had a chance to experience the different places in town that they can obtain their, their hours of community service and volunteer work. So we got to go to the, the theater. We got to go over to see the Lions Club at the Ryder Center. Just those different opportunities, I think is really neat for kids to see at the eighth grade level. So I don't know if they were included in the past, but I thought it was a really neat concept, so thank you for that. Couple other things. Junior High Track is this Saturday in Loapan and we have three participants this year. We've got Mason Shanick in the high jump and long jump. Addie, I think I'm saying this right, she's a sixth grader, Addie Shanick? Addison. She's doing the high jump and then Ella Glennan also qualified. So we'll have three students representing us in Loapan this weekend. There were some other things that have happened here that I've been apprised of. Mr. Lopez let us know that congratulations is to be sent out to Zoe Croll. She's gonna be a state representative in her age group for the songbird art contest. I don't know if a lot of folks know how, how that looks, but the top twelve national winners that are chosen for the first place in their state, these winners can receive prize packages from the Wildlife Forever Group and Adventure Key Group, so it's a pretty prestigious award, so.
Be proud, Dad.
Lastly, I was informed that, you know, we, every year, I believe it's the third Thursday of April, they just take your son or daughter to work. That, that's something that was brought to my attention, that Kalen Klein was able to go with Dad over to Eagle River. So maybe Mrs. Klein can tell me a little more because I wasn't, I didn't have an opportunity to interview her, but maybe you can say a little bit more about how that went. So that was a pretty neat experience.
Yeah, Kalen, Kalen, Kalen researched that and found that herself and she, that's her second year in a row that she's done that. And she loves it and they, it's, it's a pretty cool thing. Her, the whole, all the guys at his work, they all, you know, make plans and save things for her because she loves to put the sign up. So like the Eagle River sign when you're in town, like the sign of events. So she put that up with, you know, she went up in the bucket truck with Daddy and put the sign up. So she, yeah, she loves that and it's been a kind of a neat thing for her. I'm like, you don't want to come to the healthcare? No, it's Eagle River Lake water, okay? So it's pretty cool that, you know, a girl's doing a boy kind of job. So hey, we're, we're. So yeah, so she's had, she had a good time with that and is pretty proud of that. And it was nice of Eagle River to allow that, if they have to bring you to their board and okay that. And so, two years in a row, they've done that, so good publicity for them too. I'm not sure if the newspaper saw them or not. Last year, they took the pictures and stuff, but very good.
The only thing I would add is just the vocal spring concert for Three Lakes and Sugar Camp. I had one too with Jesse and the crew and Bethany put a lot into that and that, that program has been pretty impressive the last two years. They've added some tryout-type competition vocal choirs. It's neat to see some of the kids that you didn't know had, you know, that singing gift, that they're, they're out there and it's impressive. So it's going in the right direction.
We have a life skills cooking group that Terry Price is heading up and she's making sloppy joes, barbecues this Friday. And the kids help her make all of it and staff can come and buy a plate and then all the money goes towards like a kids in need fund that is used throughout the year. So if you would like to stop by on Friday and get a plate for lunch, it's around six dollars and get a whole plate full of food.
I had a quick one. So I posted about the help wanted board that we put up in the high school area and it was really interesting to see which businesses are actually watching our page. And I got emails from them. I got an email from Walmart. I got stuff from locally around here. So there was quite a bit of feedback from our community and it was a nice little connection to our businesses.
Right. Hearing nothing else, we'll go on to WASB correspondence and updates.
The only thing I had for you was that there's going to be a symposium this summer. I included the information in your board docs and it is on Friday, on July 12th and Saturday, the 13th in Green Bay. And that is where former Green Bay hacker Leroy Butler, he's going to be one of the featured speakers. And if you have an interest in that and would like to get registered, you just need to let myself know and we can help you with that. Being in the middle of summer, those are a little more difficult to plan for, but I thought it looked like an opportunity you should be aware of. That's it?
I made it.
Any other concerns, questions? I just wanted to say thank you. Obviously, losing Mike after twenty years of service to the board puts some significant influence and capability. So my hope is that we can continue so that the, the staff here at the district and the community sees the same team going forward. So appreciate your grace and welcome to Mitch for his first board meeting. Other than that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second.
All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Five-zero.
You cannot leave till you sign diplomas. And a couple of contracts, so.